Please to the board's meeting and the planning board to order. Gentlemen, please rise for the pleasure of the agents.
Pleasure agents.
In the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, May 16, 2024. We do not have those before us, so we'll defer those to a later meeting. We do have the August 15, 2024 minutes to review and consider. Does anyone have any comments or revisions? I have one.
You can tell it's me.
I will. Page two, Lightstar Solar. SWP P P? I've got one extra letter in there. Yes.
They're not mine.
Oh, come on, really?
That's good.
Any other comments or revisions?
As important as that?
Or more important, yes. If not, could I have motion to approve the minutes as modified? Seamus, second by.
All second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye. Against? The minutes for September 19, October 3, and October 17, again, will be deferred to a later date. Next item on the agenda is the possible extension or abandonment of applications pursuant to town code. 263917M Building 920 Associates LLC. Kelly?
So this application was approved in May, May 16 of 2024. Six months brings it to your November 16th meeting, so your next meeting. They haven't submitted a request yet for an extension. What I would recommend is that you do a 30-day extension from the November 16 date. We'll reach out to them again and see if they want to submit an extension for your consideration.
Comments from the board?
And that would be to your December 19th, will be December 19.
It's one month after November 16. Could I have a motion then to extend a one-month extension pending application or submission of a letter requesting further extension to December 19, 2024? Eric, second by Phil, all in favor, say aye. Against?
And Sean will reach out.
Perfect. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. 69 Celery Avenue, otherwise known as Essam Sales, 19-1-87. We have an application for an amended site plan and special permit for manufacturing on 7.62 plus or minus acres along Celery Avenue in the AI District with AQ3 floodplain, ponding area, street corridor, and water supply watershed overlays. First off, do we have anyone from the public for this public hearing? Okay.
So as the board may recall, this is an application for an amended special permit and site plan to include a manufacturing use to an existing truck terminal under your code. I did speak with the applicant's representative, and they have requested that this meeting, that this public hearing be adjourned to your November 19 meeting. They were looking to address some of the comments that they had.
November 20?
Sorry, November?
21st.
21st. My calendar is going December. Sorry. I mean, unless anybody wants to come up. So they have requested that it be adjourned to November 1st.
So what we'll do is we'll open up the public hearing and adjourn it.
Yep.
So could I have a motion to open the public hearing for 69 Celery Avenue?
No move.
Phil, second by.
Aye.
Marty, all in favor, say aye. Against? Again, I'll ask the public, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this public hearing for this project? If not, anyone from the board have any further comments on this application?
They're not here to hear it, Neil.
I was gonna ask the question, do we want to bring up questions tonight so they can see them from the minutes, or do we want to just?
We could, we could hold them if you wish till when we adjourn, when we open the meeting again.
I have no problem holding it for two weeks.
I think that would probably be best, that way the applicant and their representative would be there, hopefully could address them.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. There's no other comments from the board, then could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing until November 21, 2024?
I'll place a motion.
Diana, second by.
Second.
Seamus, all in favor, say aye. Against? So they'll be so notified?
They will be so notified.
Okay, excellent. Next item on the agenda is SR94 LLC Solar Project, Lightstar Renewables, 20-1-21.12. We have an application for a site plan and special permit for a solar energy system on 60.7 plus or minus acres along Randall Street, New York State Route 94 in a CO zone with AQ3 floodplain ponding area overlays. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me again. Olivia Feldman, Lightstar, back again. So, again, this is the State Route 94 community solar project. It's a small project. It's a temporary project in an otherwise relatively industrial area. Per the last meeting that I attended, there was some discussions about the noise study that had been done and a request to add some landscaping to the northeastern portion of the project. So we've gone ahead and provided updating, updated landscaping design here that is what this print is. And we've gone and highlighted the important bits here, so you can see.
Could you point out what's actually highlighted, because we can't read that from here?
Sure. Yeah, I can also bring it closer if that's helpful.
As long as everybody can see it. I'd like the public to all see it too.
All right, so we've got, this is the eastern access road that comes in through here. There is some landscaping already proposed around here, but it was noted that there was, there was none between the access road and the property line and the adjacent property owner there. So we added a row here of gray owl juniper shrubs, and they can grow up to five foot tall. And so that's what's highlighted is the tiny dots where they're shown to be proposed, and then the line that was added.
They can grow to five feet tall. How far are these spaced? How tall are they now in a bucket or in a bed or the? Do you think we should?
The size of planting, they're, they come in a three gallon bucket. Size of maturity is five foot, spaced five feet apart, and it's going to be 34 of them. So that's, that's the revision. So I know we've had a lot of back and forth about this project. We've gone and made all the updates requested, and I think we've had a lot of really good discussions up until this point. So tonight, if we could, I would like to request the approval of the site plan and special use permit application. I understand there may be some conditions or some resolutions involved to discuss, but yeah, I'll stop it there. Thank you.
Thanks, Olivia. Kelly?
So there's a couple of emails back and forth with the applicant. I had also notified the board. One of the biggest questions that I had, and I prepared for your draft resolution, but one of the biggest questions that I had was whether or not a waiver was required for the panels. There is a bit of a discrepancy on the plans, so that will have to be included as a new condition to the resolution.
When you say inconsistency, what type?
So the, the plans show that a variance would be needed because the stepback is 80 feet. So that bulk table needs to be updated because the fence is the security fence, and that permitted to be 80 feet. But I asked the applicant to confirm that the panels were 100 feet set back.
They were still setback.
I received an email this afternoon from the engineer for the project who said that all of the panels are 100 feet setback. I know that you had said in an email that you thought that they may not be. So what the condition would be, would be that they all have to be 100 feet, and it has to be shown on the plans, and the bulk table needs to be corrected. If they find that they have one panel that is closer than 100 feet, then you take that panel out or come back to you. But their engineer did confirm subsequent to all of that 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 was.
That it would work.
So you don't need a waiver for that. However, they still are requesting a waiver from the slopes. And what your code provides is that the planning board may waive any of the provisions of this section, which is 9755. If it is demonstrated by the applicant that under the facts and circumstances, the submission of such documentation would cause unnecessary and undue hardship, and the modification could be accomplished without significant environmental harm. Where the modification is from an numerical standard, i.e. height of 10 feet, stepback of 75 feet, 28-foot lot, et cetera, the planning board may grant relief up to a 20% increase based on the criteria noted above from the standards specified herein, and further relief would require action by the DVA. So they are looking to construct some of their slopes on greater than 15%.
From 15 to 18?
15 to 18%. So that's the waiver that the applicant is asking you to consider this evening.
And what, what was the extent of that, construction within that area?
Thinking of just. April 14th, not April, August 14th, we submitted a letter in response to Mr. Dropkin's comments where we went through the actual criteria in the board, but its eight posts will be located in the area to support the racking. So there'll be no grading in there. There will be drilling of eight posts to, to support it. And so it will be very little disturbance. Now, there will be panels over that area, but.
Physical disturbance is the ordering of the posts.
Eight of the posts drilled into slopes of between 15 and 18%.
Without reviewing the entire submission, could you explain to them why you believe it's an unnecessary and undue hardship?
Yeah, because to, to do it around, to, to work around that and put the posts in different areas, we'd actually have to go disturb more areas to replace the panels that would go, you know, over the area.
To maintain the same size?
Yes, and the visual, all the impacts, you know, associated would be, would essentially be greater. And the, you know, the impacts of this minor disturbance won't change the topography of the site, won't change the slopes.
Not change the trajectory.
The visual analysis that shows this area won't be, you know, near the road or substantially more, make the project more visible. So it's really, it will save additional cost, reduce land disturbance, and not really have any significant additional, you know, impact. We believe based upon that it will be an undue. One thing, prong was the undue hardship. The second prong was that it was, the modification could be accomplished without significant environmental harm. So those were the two tests for the waiver. So we believe based upon that, we meet both of those tests.
And there's no grading set in that area?
No, no.
So stricter, better changing the slopes. Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
How do you as an engineer feel about that?
I don't think as a legal standard, there's really no technical aspect of it, other than the.
Structurally, for the soil, whatever you like, there's no impact?
No.
Other than physical post, putting a post in?
That's correct.
Phil?
I don't have any further concerns, other than I would say, I don't know, Kelly, do we want to? In so far as the plantings are concerned, we almost always have a requirement for a one-year look back undertaken by the building inspector and the town engineer. Jeremy, do that because you put something on.
Make sure they survive.
A plan looks one way. When you go out to the field and you actually see it, we might decide that there might need to be more plantings.
Just the sparsity of it, not necessarily the survival rate.
Well, it's a special permit.
It's in the draft resolution.
It is?
Yeah, specific condition 12, so the, I merged it in with that one.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. And I have no comment.
Jeremy?
Nothing.
And I have no issues. So. Neil?
Just a couple of questions, clarification. The one spot I've always been concerned about was in the front of the property, they show an obstruction area, and then they, on sheet C101, and on sheet C301, it shows that the lease line is back from that property line. It's, it's a very easy solution that the owner just agreed to not remove any of the trees in that area. And I'm just hoping you had that, that approval from the owner. Otherwise, you have no control over as the applicant.
We do have a specific condition in there about the declaration of restrictive covenant, so that basically they, they can't take.
Okay, so you're only.
In order to file that, they need the owner's signature to do that.
Thank you very much.
I had a note that.
I, I know, I know you talked about it, that, thank you. The other question, just dealing noise. See, all the panels are going to be done at night, so that between, call it, whatever, 6 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night, until the next morning, there's no need for the panels to move. At what time do you reset the panels to catch early morning sun?
I believe at the end of the daytime, once the sun has set, they reset at neutral, and then they'll come back and tilt in the morning to catch the morning light. So I believe at nighttime, they're flat.
Okay, because I just wanted, during, during the summer, a bunch of noise at 1 o'clock in the morning could really be more of a nuisance than anything else. So if you're doing it first thing in the morning, it's probably better than in the middle of the night.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last thing, I missed that we had two solar projects coming in. I think you said you're gonna use screws to, for the post, and you're not gonna pound them in? Is that correct or not?
I don't recall at the top of my head, to be honest.
Okay, because I had heard people commenting about, I think that, and Becky can help me out here if I'm right. I've heard things about projects where they're now pounding the posts into the ground, and the amount of noise from that. And I don't think we considered anything in relation to that kind of noise. I would love for you to see screws going in. I know we did it on, I know we didn't do it. I know it was done. Q's property. So if that's gonna be screws in, then that's a wonderful thing. If it's gonna be pounding it in, that may be another noise issue that has not been considered.
Yeah, I can take another look at that, but overall, construction is gonna be within the allowable hours for the town code. So if there is noise, you know, beyond what's expected during operation, of course, but that would be related to those hours, you know, specified by the town.
But it may also exceed the threshold of that property line.
But I think there's different construction noise requirements, so I think the noise, we would be, whatever the noise requirements are during construction, which is a little different because there is usually a little leeway during construction phase versus operation phase since it's temporary. And it's only during daytime hours and no weekends for construction.
I think you'll have weekends anyhow, you, just later starts to start at nine instead of eight.
Yeah, it's gonna stick with those hours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil.
Yeah, it's a driven pier.
Driven. You need pounded.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board? No. Nothing else? And Kelly?
Sure. So I prepared for you a draft resolution for your consideration. It was quite lengthy. So I'm gonna start with page five. There's bold italics for correspondence from the Department of Public Works. I checked this brace. We actually didn't receive anything back from them. It's been a while, so I'll just take that paragraph out. There's no timeframe that they need to comply within. It's really senseless and a courtesy. And then on the following page, there is one finding that is in bold italics regarding the floodplain, that no improvements are proposed within the 100-year floodplain. However, the proposed action includes development upon approximately 0.98 acres located within the 500-year floodplain. Therefore, the planning board has required all wiring within the 500-year floodplain and this overlay district, the floodplain overlay district, to be elevated, see specific condition two. Additionally.
On that question, just for Sean, the equipment pads, they're not within the 500 foot? Okay.
Additionally, the planning board finds that there is adequate means of vehicular access to the area from an existing street which is safe from flooding. That's from the lengthy discussion you had at the pound of your negative declaration. I carried it forward here so you could make your floodplain and ponding area overlay district priming. I will include a paragraph right after that regarding the waiver for the slopes. If you, you have to let me know if you're gonna grant that, because if you're not, then they don't get this, and they have to go to the DVA. So if you do decide to, then it would go in there. Specific conditions, that number two, right now says DVA decision, but that's only if you didn't get the waiver, so it's really a holding place. There is six, okay, my numbers are off. So little h, where I said revise the landscaping plan specifically on the locations on blah, blah, blah. I need them to send me this plan so that I can include that plan as a reference here and identify it before. And I'll have to take out the trees between six and eight inches at height. I wasn't sure what was being proposed, so I was trying to.
Did you mean for a tree or shrub?
That is a shrub.
It's a shrub.
Gray owl.
It's a shrub.
There was a comment from one of the board members that the encroachments on this property are not being approved. But I don't know what encroachments those are, because I haven't seen them. Does anybody remember? Okay, well, for the record, no encroachments are being approved as part of this project. I will take out that potential condition. And I wasn't sure for the condition regarding light levels. I had in bold italics that the single motion activated light provided at the equipment area shall be shielded from any abutting properties. I didn't know if you guys were actually having a single motion activated light. Some have, some have not. Usually it was associated with battery storage.
Yeah, I don't believe any lighting is proposed at all.
Okay.
So I wasn't sure where that was in there, but.
So maybe we should put an if.
If, yeah, if one is required for any reason, we could make sure it's shielded.
Okay. And so two potentially new conditions, which Sean very kindly just proved together while you guys were talking, putting in your minutes tonight. That the plans shall be revised, and the bulk table as well to indicate compliance with the 100-foot stepback requirements. It'll be a little bit prettier than that, but basically the issue that I talked about before. And then regarding the planting, revise the plans to show the 34 gray owl juniper shrubs in the northeast property line to mitigate any potential noises indicated in the negative declaration, and all of that. So that'll replace the one. And that is all that I had. But it was quite lengthy, so I'm expecting a couple complaints.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No? Really?
Nothing. Do we need a motion as far as the, not requiring a waiver, or us granting a waiver?
Yes.
Not just by default. Could I have said motion to allow the eight posts to go with steep slope 15 to 18%? Jeremy, second by.
I'll second.
Marty, all in favor, say aye. Against? Then could I also then have a motion to approve the resolution of conditional approval major site plan for SR94 New York State LLC, otherwise known as Lightstar Solar, as modified this evening?
No move.
Phil, second by. Eric, all in favor, say aye. Against? Congratulations.
Thank you very much. So do you just send that to me tomorrow so that I could, just by email?
Apologies, I thought you already had it.
I looked for it before tonight, and I couldn't find it, so please resend it.
Okay, I have a similar. I do have one form that's associated with an incentive application. Do I have that signed?
Yes, yeah. Is it my safety?
Interrupt the blow.
That's getting rid of all duplication stuff. Spent enough time on this room.
She had all the captions on the folder.
How about the trees now?
More is called away.
It's gonna hurt you.
Usually I can know, but I haven't.
No, do you?
You're here with that? Yeah, it's, it's even. If you could email me your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
So much.
Happy holidays, students. It's hard to believe the holidays have 70 degrees out.
It's hard to believe a holiday with seven degrees out.
Next item on the agenda is David Dolores, Doris. Twenty-two dash one dash nineteen. We have an application for a site plan approval on 6.1 plus or minus acres along Pulaski Highway, County Route 6 in the AI zone. For the AQ3 floodplain and climbing senior corridor, extreme corridor, water supply watershed overlays. We're here to talk about a part two EAF.
Um, yes, so you didn't give the EAF part two for me because if you recall, I, oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to show up for the applicant.
I'm sorry.
I'm here for the applicant.
He's here for the applicant.
You're here for the applicant.
I didn't want you to think somebody was just strangely standing.
I just strangely stand anyway.
Feel free.
So at your, the last time this was on your agenda, you declared your intention to serve your agency, but I couldn't circulate until I got the EAF. I got the EAF and I circulated, but it hasn't yet been 30 days. So you can't sue the agency and I didn't send your part two to consider. Yeah, so there, yeah, so I can't do that. But what I thought that you could do this evening is you could schedule the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, when we're looking.
Mr. Chairman, you're not going to be here in December, right?
Not the first meeting.
So do you want to be here next to you?
I won't be here for the next meeting.
What you do, what you spend.
Well, depends on how you want to balance out all the projects. I don't know what you have lined up, but I'll be, I'll be back on the second meeting of December.
There's not a lot for next meeting, so if you'd like to have it at your next meeting, you can do that. You have some other public hearings, but um.
Does that work for you, Phil?
Sure.
I mean, if not, you know, we could defer it a month. But then it's on you.
Well, mine.
He's like, I'll be in and out of your time.
Eric's going to be upset with me and I don't want him to ask me.
Okay, so that would be December fifth. No.
November twenty first.
Twenty first, the second one in November, okay. From the board. November twenty first.
Yeah.
So can I have a motion to intercept the public hearing for November twenty first for this application?
So.
Seamus, second by.
All second.
Diana, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all set for the twenty first.
Yeah.
I think she wanted to be careful with you. I think we'll be pro-ativized.
That's it for that part. This is how we display this.
Next item on the agenda is Solar Liberty Energy Systems. Eighteen dash one dash one point three. You have an application for a subdivision site plan and special permit for a solar energy system on 58.9 plus or minus acres along Millburn Road, Moonlight Trail, Storms Road. This RU zone, the AQ3 stream corridor, water supply watershed, street road corridor overlays. We're here tonight to discuss the part three EAF.
Hi, good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Ari Goldberg from the law firm of Arthur David for the applicant. You've been dealing with my colleague Dan for the past several meetings, but I was in town. I figured I'd give him a break and he can beat it on me instead.
She's never said that. You just invited all.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to push it along as much as possible, so.
Well, I guess it is.
Yeah, that's all right. It was broken and fell down during the other presentation, but I think, you know, we've been here many times and I'm sure you're fairly familiar with it. What happened, we were here last in September, September seventeenth meeting. Um, and then in the intervening time, we made another supplemental submission responding to a lot of the comments from the board and from your town engineer in further, we call it an expanded part three. And then several days ago, we got back more comments from from Sean in his office. And what I thought would be most beneficial for for us and to get you, get some more information in our hands is to go through those comments, understand exactly what the board is looking for to feel comfortable in moving forward on secret. Um, so if you, if you have those lengthy comments in front of you.
November first?
It is November first, Mr. Chairman, yes. The first comment was about impacts on land, depth to water table and increase of erosion. Uh, the first bullet under one A is about the expanded part three and how, or first of all, started with the part one FBAF. We noted that the depth to water table was two feet. That was information gleaned from using the web soil survey. Um, Sean's recommendation is that the applicant provide confirmation of the water table depth. What I could do is simply redo the area of delineation on the web soil survey, provide a screenshot of the information or some sort of image to confirm that. I wanted to know if that would be appropriate for the board and help them understand what we're saying.
So no onsite boards were done or anything?
I, to my knowledge, we haven't done any onsite boards. We've relied on the web soil survey for that data. And then.
Actually, what I was looking for, I don't think this board received a copy of the web soil survey. And my comment was that that should be submitted so it could be confirmed.
Yeah, that's easy enough for us to do. And if the board's comfortable, then I can use your computer and get it too. And then on his second bullet, um, we provided an expanded part three response that basically came straight from our proposed manufacturer about the 30-year design life and then exposure to groundwater in winos that the panels can sustain. Um, Sean's recommendation is basically, I think, like a direct quote confirmation from the manufacturer. Um, I've seen the email from the manufacturer. I think a little bit more would be helpful, maybe something on their letterhead or something even more formal. So I just wanted to test that out with the board.
Is there any restriction on the fact that we can take groundwater? How close something water is or anything like that? Does that come into play as far as the attacking the steel?
I don't think so. I mean, we can, I can ask more direct questions of the manufacturer and get the response.
Sometimes, Mr. Chairman, and I think you know this from subsurface utilities, sometimes it's on the acidity of the soil or your activity with the steel. So I think the manufacturer would like to see probably the soil data that the applicant is going to prepare as well as understand the groundwater table because that affects.
I mean, to make that assertion that it's going to last a certain period of time.
Yeah, frankly, I wasn't really too worried about deterioration because that's the problem with the applicant. What I was more worried about was wind, you know, if you get a windstorm and you have an elevated groundwater, does that turn into a sail and blow around or? So I just want to make sure that that structural element is going to be safe to the public.
These are going to be augured, correct?
I don't recall this.
No, pile. They're piled driven seven feet, so it shouldn't be an issue as far as uplift then. That kind of height.
I don't know. Maybe if you got groundwater two feet or higher, it's, yeah.
So it sounds like something from the manufacturer confirming what's already been said, maybe some more detail based on specifics of the site would be helpful as well. Number two, the impacts on plants and animals. This one, um, with respect to Sean did confuse me a little bit just because in my experience, confirmation from the DEC, Fish and Wildlife, those two expert agencies have usually settled the question of impacts on plants and animals. So I wanted to really understand exactly what more we could provide, whether it's reaching back out to those agencies again or something, any additional studies.
Do you still have a question after reading what I provided in my last memo? Because that's right out of workbook.
Yeah, I guess it's, you know, the basic habitat needs.
Yeah, so I think the issue is, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't.
No, I was going to pass on to you anyway because it was your comment.
So as part of the part two, the board had indicated that there could be a possible interference with nesting breeding, foraging and overwintering habitat for dominant species that occupy the private site. That's a quote from the EAF part two. And the applicant provided correspondence from Fish and Wildlife and New York City DEC. Those agencies usually deal with species of special concern, endangered species, distracted species. When you go to the workbook, this question is talking about the common species that use this site, right?
Squirrel.
Yeah, well. Flying species that use this site. Flying squirrel. As an example, it gives, um, you know, will the project perhaps reduce sunlight damage to the ground? And and this one could, right? So we're more looking as to any impact on common species of sight, not these endangered species that those agents have already weighed in on.
Yeah, I did fully appreciate that, so that's helpful insight. Yeah, so, I mean, I guess we could talk to anyone who has more wildlife expertise. I think there's also some narrative that we can help provide that, especially as it relates to our treaties. We've already engaged that tree surveyor and I wonder if they had anything to add to on how our addition of trees, the removal of non-invasive species could help answer that question. Did the board have anything to add on that number two there?
No.
Oh, we're good.
And then, so number three is impact on aesthetic resources. Here are, so Sean had some three bullets under there.
Before we get to the three bullets, Sean actually had a comment where it said that the applicant's narrative provides comparison of solar glare to other materials like on snow-covered fields and steel. And they suggested a potential resolution condition that basically requires the applicant to implement mitigation measures if the town initiates an enforcement action in response to complaints and obtains a conviction of guilty.
Is that, is that the normal procedure?
That's not the normal procedure that you guys see. You guys want to see, you know, the complete moon glare study. You want to see it with the mitigation in there, like you just did with the.
Yeah, we want to see it upfront.
Um, certainly if there's a problem and the town goes to court, as you know, they could go to justice court and justice court is going to issue a fine. So then the town would actually need to start an action in Supreme Court, which costs more, takes more time. And that's the only court that can actually tell them you need to do such and such. But it's for your consideration, I just wanted to let you know that it could be an enforcement issue and it's not how you've generally proceeded in the past.
So in the past, don't we often have language that, um, you know, once the project is completed, if the town engineer feels sort of in his best judgment, then.
More landscaping is needed? Yeah, that's, that's what we're just talking about. So we could do that. Um, and we would keep that in here for for this. But the way it was worded made it seem like we're not going to do anything now, but let us know if you have problems. So the board should talk about it. Maybe the applicant can give you a little bit more of an explanation of really what they were considering. That's just.
Yeah, that was not necessarily the intent. The, I think where that language originated is to ensure that there's a bona fide complaint about glare. And not just, in our experience, which is some individuals who, regardless of the mitigation that's done, just don't like solar, so they're going to complain about it. Or they're going to raise an issue when the issue is not substantive enough. So that's why we added the the due process element. If, I heard earlier about the one-year look back.
Yeah.
I think that's probably better. I'm happy to defer to your standards, what the town's comfortable with, what your current enforcement enforcement regime regime is also comfortable with. So if you want to reject that condition, that's fine. We'll work on something that's better for the standard.
The other one was in that same paragraph. Uh, the applicant's narrative response indicates that they're amenable to providing cut sheets or information sheets on the panel to be installed. And Sean said, we recommend you discuss the proposed conditions with me. So you want to provide them now?
I don't think they're available now. The way, my understanding is the way the developer wants to approach it is proceed far enough along in the approvals, mainly have the discretionary approvals in hand and then they'll procure the panels and we would provide it before the building permit.
Can they bring in literature on multiple sets of either ores kind of thing, vendors that they would typically deal with?
Yeah.
So that, you know, to make sure they're all, if they're all compliant, then it doesn't really matter which one he ultimately goes with.
There's some requirements that this board has put into place regarding, they have POs or POs or anything like that in it. So we just want to make sure that if you give some samples, they can say, you know, these are fine. You're still subject to these conditions, but you'll know these are okay ones to pursue.
It'll be one of these three.
Correct.
Something like that.
I think that's a really good middle ground. Appreciate that.
And I'll turn it back over to them.
No, that's very helpful. Just need to use that note before I forget it. Uh, so the first bullet is having to do with our visual impact assessment. We had submitted a series of these as revised. And then the comment from the engineers that recommend that you discuss applicant's qualifications to prepare these studies. I think it is in your, it should be exhibit three to the most recent revised supplemental. It's in part prepared by Solar Liberty, who is the EPC, the contractor, and in part, in part the developer. They take the images and then prepare using Adobe Photoshop. They help prepare visuals of how the array is supposed to look on the topography. And then they also use Solar Forge, uh, which is like a sort of an online system that helps uh, take stock of of the situation on the ground and then it'll help identify the soul, the yellow glare, the solar glare that comes from it. So if there is any concern about the objectivity of that data, whether Solar Liberty, Solar Energy Systems is qualified to do it, I'm happy to to take that back to the team and then we can help sway the board in any way.
If I could, just I could give you some background as to why I provided that comment. Uh, so first of all, at the head of that comment was based on your discussion, I think it was dampissent, it was about yellow glare. I had anticipated getting revised glare study. The glare study that came in, the same glare study that was originally submitted back when the application, and that was from 2021. And I think the application itself has been modified in the layout of the panel. So right now, the glare study you have in hand doesn't necessarily reflect the site plan you have. That may be better from a glare perspective or maybe worse, I can't say.
Sounds good, Joe.
The other item I had was in terms of speaking to the credibility of the preparer. Uh, and I didn't write this in my comments, but I want to discuss it tonight with the board. The discrete observation points, that's what the applicant is studying in terms of what point you see in that glare.
Physical addresses.
The physical addresses, but also the latitude and longitude. But most importantly was the height above grade was zero. You never take the height above grade, you're not going to do, yeah, usually it would be the height of an observer or something like that. If it's a car, it would be three and a half feet. So I've reviewed a lot of these, the board's reviewed a lot of it over the years. I've never seen anybody put a zero in there. Uh, so I think it's a pretty glaring mistake, so I.
Hundred and ten.
He's so funny.
Thank you, Sean.
No, that's extremely helpful insight. As you can see, the chain of this has been us taking comments back.
No, I understand. And perhaps your client has staff that's familiar with preparing these. Perhaps this was the first time and they said, well, this is easy, I can do this and they, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Do we normally require an outside agency to do that study rather than?
There's no requirement, it's over there. But when I see an error like that, I question the preparers.
Understood. Well, so I think what I'll do with that then, Sean, and maybe the board would have more substantive comment when the revised glare study is submitted. Exactly what you just said, bring it to them and maybe even best to share a screen and go through the Solar Forge with them to ensure that whatever you're saying, whatever the board might be saying is getting done properly.
Yep.
Have you used a technology before?
No, I don't.
Okay. Not even in your spare time? Okay. It's more than reasonable in my opinion. And then adding addresses instead of viewpoints, I think that's pretty easy to do. It looks like Sean, you've even started doing that for us in your third bullet. And then I think with that, number four, I think the comment here.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Within number three.
Yeah.
You provided a number of photographs. I think there are just a couple that have renderings included within those views.
Yeah.
I think we always find value in as many renderings as possible. Even if the rendering is just sort of like an outline of where the panels would go behind a.
Yeah.
Tree cover, just pictures of.
What am I looking for?
viewpoint is not, is not always that helpful.
Okay.
And then with respect to the glare study, and I realize it's going to be kind of built out a little bit. I think it's, there was narrative about how there's foliage and a few other things in between the source of glare and the recipient of glare. I don't know that it's super clear where that is and, you know, we don't have any, we don't have any plans that include both the panels and the tree plantings that you're anticipating doing. Like the tree, as far as I remember, the tree plant doesn't have panels.
You probably refer to this tree plant.
So really what I'm saying is, to the extent that we could get a more qualitative or objective idea of what's in between the glare and the, yeah.
Maybe showing panels even on this one. Because even on, yeah, on the front cover site plan, there is some, it's not super robust, it's just in lines. I don't even think it's clear that it's being added here. There's also, I drove the site the other day in the daytime and there might be more adding right here. And that does relate to Sean's comment about the addresses and on the one property, one skull's up. So it basically. So basically adding panels, and I also think that would be extremely helpful for everyone involved in terms of actually seeing it with an aerial underlay, depending how much it's like, so I'll take it.
We do have this too, I think, starting like, we tied back on details.
Yeah, I was going to make a point back. I got very hung up on glare. If we understood where the property lines were on those, I think that'd be helpful, because there's a tree down there. I don't know whose tree it is.
Can you, do you mind showing me that, Joe?
Actually, just for example.
I'm getting a little blurred up.
Yeah. No, what they should do, let's replace it with a GIS map underlay that shows the property line and...
That's great. I appreciate it. You weren't here for the last meeting.
Yeah, it takes very good notes.
Yeah, I mean, I was probably the most concerned, but like, we don't, we don't have yellow glare in our projects for the most part. Yeah, I think this might be the first one. Right now, what happens is something will come in and then they will design out it, whether they put it in the screening or they'll just drop a panel. But in this case, I don't think they can do that. If you look at the glare study. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a lot of minutes. So it's kind of a big deal, so that's a serious, not a big point.
It's a big piece of panels north.
No flag.
I hope you're ready to move on.
Respectfully, I'm not going to take that counter. No, thank you for bringing that up. So then the last one is impacts on noise ordering in light. I think I do understand what you're getting at here. What we've only really done so far is taken the site plan and shown the range of noise emanating from the main noise producers, and I think it'd be helpful if there was possibly a narrative, either more narrative from the applicant or even something from a school engineer signing off on what was shown.
To be honest with you, we've done a lot of the solar and noise seems to come up and it seems to be kind of an amp. But I understand that these generally don't produce a lot of noise, but if there's going to be a noise study that supports a secret determination, it has to be done properly. You have to add the sound properly and you have to evaluate it versus the ambient noise. It just can't be like, oh, I have forty-five dBs after, after construction. That's a meaningless number without noise happening.
Okay. And now, those were just the four comments from November one from Sean, and I know you've been very responsive and given a lot of insight into Dan when he's appearing too, so I just want to also open up to the board. If there's anything else running through your mind about this project, how else we can take those comments back, submit additional documents and move the project along.
Well, I have a clarification question. On your response to comments of the town engineer and the response to planning board comments, you have a plant schedule which shows fifty-seven conifers. Underneath that is the following: carnivorous trees, one hundred and seven over two hundred and thirty-six, forty-five point three percent, and then deciduous trees, one twenty-nine over two thirty-six. Percentage, I'm not sure I understand what you're trying to convey there.
Do you mind showing me what you're looking at so I can make sure I'm the same thing?
So it's a plant schedule and...
So I think it's, we're planting two hundred and thirty-six total trees.
And you've got fifty-seven here during the king in area one and area two, area three, area nine.
The two thirty-six is inclusive of these down here too. So it's the thirty, twenty-seven, seventy, and then it's like five rows of fifty trees.
The total is two thirty-six. Of the two thirty-six, you're saying there's a hundred and seven?
Yeah, of the two hundred and thirty-six trees, we're planting a hundred and seven are carnivorous. That's forty-five point three percent of our trees.
Okay, but this shows fifty-seven being planned, the schedule itself, the first two entries.
Oh, the two thirty-six is area one plus area two plus area three.
Okay. This is red cedar and this is red cedar. It comes fifty-seven. Where are the other?
Under area three, there's these sugar maples. There's seventy of those.
It's the deciduous.
Okay.
I'm trying to get the carnivorous trees reconciled.
Natural light signs, if we're...
Excuse me?
Light signs?
Yeah, there's white pine listed. Which represents the one hundred and seven and the remainder should be all the deciduous.
Okay, good. Clarify.
I mean, it's Kelly's test to make attorneys do math.
Nope, go ahead.
That's accurate.
That's why we even have the question.
Some days we've got it, some days. If that's for eight, forget it.
Eight and ten.
He's sitting next to me and I have a dangerous spot for him.
Thank you, Mr. Draper.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So in terms of right now, that's pretty much all you can do. The EAF Part Three is not ready to be adopted. They're going to go back. They're going to prepare responses.
Backfill the information.
Yep, and then after that, hopefully that'll be enough for you to authorize drafting of an AED.
And I know there's also a discussion about subdivision application. I think what we wanted to do is make sure that the secret process didn't bear out any substantial site plan changes that would sort of render that work a little premature. So once we, maybe in parallel to when Kelly's authorized to draft a NEDEC resolution, we'll be working on that subdivision application as well. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I hope you took good notes.
Terrible.
Good luck with that easel.
Yes, where's the town building?
Dumpster's in the back.
Some engineering.
Next item on the agenda, Bachman Pre-Car Garage Carriage House. Thirteen point dash one dash six point two, an application for amended site plan approval for garage carriage house, two point oh six five plus or minus acres alone housing. An R U zone, three senior group four to overlays. Is here the season for initial presentation? Begin the secret process.
So it's been notified that the meeting was tonight. It does not appear that he is present, so... Oh, I thought you were just like pointing someone.
No, no.
So I think we just have to still advise the building department that he is not present. You can either try and get him on the next meeting agenda or the building department will have to do it.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
Nothing. You can move on to your next application.
Okay, the next application then would be local law number thirteen. We have drafts in front of us for comment. This is for interrupting local law number thirteen of two thousand twenty-four. Local law to amend the Goshen Town Code, chapter ninety, it's modify chapter ninety-seven. Short-term rentals to require owners of short-term rentals to obtain short-term rental permits. And Kelly, I'll let you take it from here.
Oh, so I had nothing to do with the drafting of this local law. No Kelly's for it.
No Kelly's were involved.
This is actually prepared by the town attorney in consultation with Attorney Robert Betta, I believe. It's been referred to you under the zoning code because it is anticipated, I believe, to be included in chapter ninety-seven. So if you do have comments and changes, I'll take some brief notes now, but potentially maybe email them. Because there's a lot of posts that's over there.
Some of them aren't worthy of comment, but some of them might be worth mentioning.
Okay.
I'll start with you, Phil.
Yeah, you know...
Or if you need more time, it is a little...
I have an observation. In the violations section, which is towards the end, an appeal of a violation is taken to the ZBA. I'm not sure why they're structuring it that way, but I would think that if there's a violation, it ought to go to the court.
No, so if Frank issues a violation of any provision of the zoning code, again, he issues a notice violation, appearance to get information, they appear that automatically, and then they would actually appeal that to the ZBA under state law that processes to go...
If it's under the zoning code?
If it's under the zoning code, so...
What if it's not under the zoning code?
Frank wouldn't be issued a violation, unless it's under the building code. So any violation, say that there was a site plan that somebody is not in compliance with, he issues them a violation, they can appeal that violation to the ZBA, which automatically stays the proceeding in front of justice court while they process that appeal with the ZBA.
All right, is...
I'm not sure why it's set out. If it, I haven't reviewed it yet. So if it's set out in this local law, it's likely not something that needs to be included because it should already be included elsewhere in the zoning code.
What, the, it is what?
The appeal process.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But, I mean, maybe the board can compare what the process is in here, make sure it's consistent with what's in the code to make sure that's consistent with state law.
Well, just a question. Kelly, if there were something that didn't match up, this
As long as it's not...
local law would take precedence over any other section of the code.
If it's more restricted than other sections, but it can't conflict with what state law allows.
Can't conflict with what state law allows, but if it's conflicting with another article in the town code and it's specific to these permits.
Would need to check that other provision because what Phil is saying this one says is what it should say. So the other provision in the code should say the same thing. I haven't looked at that provision in a while, so I can't guarantee, but that's the process for a violation.
Well, how about if it's a violation of, say, the occupancy, say they're having a party with a hundred, you know, a hundred and fifty people there. It's not necessarily a zoning...
It's building code. It's enforcement, it's building and here's the building code.
Yeah. But if there's a provision in this... But if there's a provision in this law that sets the occupancy that now they're over, and he also issues it over this, that can be appealed to the ZBA. Neil?
I just, this seems to be, I think, I agree with Phil that this seems to be written up as though it's mandating that any violation of this on short-term rentals must go to the ZBA. And I think you're saying differently. It could go to the ZBA if people want to appeal it there.
Yeah, they don't have to appeal it. It just goes...
They don't have to appeal it at all, right?
They don't have to go, right. They, okay. And I just wanted to make sure, I think it's written up like Phil said. It's mandated and it must go there first.
So maybe the report would have to say then that the town board should review the enforcement procedures regarding appeals. Appeals are not mandatory and consider removing...
I don't think this local law states that appeals are mandatory, but it does say that the appeals have to be heard by the ZBA.
The property owner is entitled, entitled to appeal the co-enforcement offices determination of the ZBA. It's not mainly...
No.
It's entitled. I think he read it. It's better written here.
That paragraph only refers to renewals or revocations, not just violations against the use.
So really talked about in terms of what the zoning board appeals with powers are. And that includes appeals to review any order requirement, decision interpretation or determination made by an administrative official. I mean, it doesn't actually say like...
Get something else, Phil?
I would make a recommendation that we have Kelly add her comments as well.
I can tell you I have not reviewed it yet, so if you'd like to see my comments first, I think, then you should ask for additional time so you can see them to make sure you agree with whatever they mean.
Yes.
Yes.
Just pull the board.
Just curious, how did this come up, this particular?
I'm not sure. It was a very hot topic over the last two years. There's been a lot of litigation about short-term rentals. They've been big issues in other municipalities. Everything ranging from somebody thinking that it turns a residence into a commercial business and that's right next door to them. Some people go to Airbnb and they love them. I'm just using Airbnb generally for the purpose of short-term rental positions. Other people don't like it because in other municipalities, they may basically be turned into event venues where you can rent out someone's house and throw a bachelorette party. They don't like that. Other people are perfectly fine with, you know, we have more...
Or bachelor party.
I don't know what to tell. I know you complained about that.
So they can be loud and rowdy and if your neighbor has one, you may not like it. Why does it come up in Goshen? I haven't heard of any complaints. Maybe Frank can say it.
Yeah, so we, in fact, again, yeah, we did receive complaints over the years. I've violated a parcel, brought it to court, and there just wasn't enough teeth in the town code to enforce it.
The Chester just came out with something rejecting short-term rentals. This is in the Chronicle, yeah, this week. Their board came out against it.
There's a lot of, like I said, litigation on it because the big case just came out of the Southern District of New York. I say just, but now it's probably been about two years, where they say that you can't do something like that because essentially that violates the dormant commerce clause. There are some people that buy a piece of property and this was their intention, or you're taking away their rights or money, things like that. So they have to be very carefully corrected.
What about let the buyer beware?
That's something totally...
I don't remember the Latin for that.
Caviar entourage.
Enter or something like that?
Yeah, caviar entourage. That's more like if you have a ghost in your house. And by the way, that is the lead case you left on caviar entourage, so take that.
What does the village do with this?
I don't know. Only familiar with two other municipalities specifically. So I can write a letter to Neil, hold on. I see. All of a sudden, I was like, do I have a letter? So the board wants to ask for additional time for board comments. And again, if you do have any, if you're able to email them to me too, and I can also put that in a summary memo similar to how we have the building code.
Can I just put mine out here tonight?
After we get back to you.
Yes, of course.
I was just going to ask Frank if he can perhaps give us some background on some of the complaints. I have heard, I know of some of them, but so that way we can understand what this law may have to try to address.
Well, I think it was a shock in orbit. All of a sudden, you know, you have a home in a subdivision or a cul-de-sac that's transient guests weekend over weekend, and it creates some concerns. It could be noise, it could be garbage, which we have the building code, as you know, Neil, to enforce that in town code for that stuff. But I would violate, bring it to court, but that, the people that were in violation are gone. You know, we have, you got to give thirty days to remedy, right? They're gone in one weekend.
Right.
So it's a vicious cycle. You're just, you know, spinning your wheels.
So what, the concerns that you, the complaints you have about garbage?
Garbage, noise, possibly overcrowding.
Parking.
Parking.
Wait a second. The owner of the home has to abide by all the laws from the town, right?
Yeah.
So if they're leaving garbage or if they're making too much noise, so then wouldn't we cite the owner of the home?
A hundred percent. That's, we already have those codes in place to handle that.
And I think what you're saying is that the violation then by that group leaving has then been cured.
Without this law in place, people who do the...
So that they can't continuously do it? Like somebody's going to complain that there's a party over the weekend and Frank corrects them on it. Somebody's going to complain because there was this party and it was just too loud and rowdy. And Frank goes and he issues a violation and you have to give him a certain timeframe to cure that. Well, those people are wrong, so the violation is cured, but they're just going to do it again and he's going to have to issue another one, but they're gone, and so it's cured. So he issues another one because they do it again, and there's nothing that he can do to act.
It's essentially, a homeowner is running a bed and breakfast or, not a bed and breakfast, but an Airbnb unchecked, completely unchecked.
And the owner's out of state sometimes, do you think?
They can do it as much as they want because there's no... They could do it as much as they want because there's no, there's no, nothing in the code to stop them from doing it.
And there's nothing that...
So this will could put, put a control on that kind of activity.
The garbage could be back to back then.
So, so if you're a homeowner and you just happen to decide to have a party every weekend, there's different people coming every weekend.
Are we talking party or overnights?
These would be overnight.
They would be overnight.
I just use the party because it's the whole bachelor.
So, so, so if I rent a two-bedroom house and I invite fifty people for a party on a Friday night or Saturday night and fifty people come and they're parking all over the road, parking on the neighbor's property, parking wherever they want, right, it's unchecked. You, you know, if, if Frank is involved and, and there's, you know...
But I'm, I'm confused, if it, if you're a homeowner and you decide to do that, forget about renting it out already.
Yeah, but you're still...
But you're a full-time owner, right? I mean, you're a full-time resident, you live in the house. These people don't live in the house.
And most of the owners are LLCs.
And they're not, they're out of state.
They're absentee.
This is investment property and it is, I'm sure Neil speaks from experience that with the internet, people rent online.
And there's a big, uh, big, when Legoland came in, this certainly became a big interest. And people were actually renting out tents on their property and they're renting, you know, there's a whole bunch of things that have come up.
No, I think that's only in San Francisco.
The, the way it is now, it's one of these LLCs of absentee owners, rents out a house overnight, a couple nights. I mean, there's absolutely no inspection of the home, fire safety, egress, anything, you know, besides just, you know, a nuisance in terms of parking or garbage, correct?
That's correct, and I think there's language in this draft.
Requires...
That requires some inspection and...
It formalizes the whole process.
Lee?
Yes?
Swimming pools, what, what's the impact on...
That's different, that's swimley and that goes to the Department of Health, sorry.
Uh, not, uh...
Just that...
If it's a B and B or if it's one of these places, what's the impact to allowing people to use the swimming pools? So it's what the question is.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a liability for the property owner, but it's renting out just for swimming pools.
Typically, if it's a structured B and B, just like a temporary residence, like a motel or hotels like that, it's considered a public pool, which has got to be permitted.
Okay, so I think if, if we're gonna look at this law, that should be indicated also because most of us don't know that.
Yeah.
So don't go renting out your pool by the hour, you will get...
You laugh about that, but people hold up and ask that they can do that.
Oh, no, no, I've forgotten, I've reported people to the firm.
Yes.
So, um, yeah, I mean, Sean really should stop doing that, it's disgusting. Um, so what I will do is I will break to the town board and ask for additional time, noting also it is holidays. So, Leah, I know, you wanna go over your comments tonight, or you'd like to?
I just want to mention, because I'm not gonna be here.
I know, it's a little bit rude, actually, I'm just gonna keep going.
Page two. Ninety-seven point two dash one, uh, I'm sorry, dash two. It says ninety, thirty-one days or less through any form of advertising. Is it that or less than thirty-one, because somewhere else we talk about thirty days.
It should be thirty-one or less.
It should be thirty-one just...
Throughout the whole document.
Yeah.
Okay, that's one thing. Okay, so that kinda ties back to ninety-seven three, which is renewed every thirty days. Oh, the rental permit must be renewed thirty days prior to expiration. And I thought perhaps it should say a minimum of thirty days prior to.
Yes, it should.
Because it's not the exact date of thirty days prior to.
Keep going, I don't have to write it up.
Then, then, uh, something also somewhere in here that the property that's gonna be rented out uh, should be in good standing with respect to property taxes and insurance. It shouldn't be a property that's on the delinquency list for taxes due and things like that. Show them that line of list, particularly absentee owners. Another thing, you know, the homes have fireplaces or wood burning stoves or something like that. If it's gonna be rented out, maybe they should have to get an underwriter certification of some sort for the, uh, not, not the electric, but certainly a fireplace and wood burning stoves because you have different people using it and it could potentially be a hazard.
What's that? What then would I be?
Well, for the fire, uh, would that be the building department or would that be...
We, we could ask for, uh...
A third party?
A, a third party, definitely a third party, like, uh, like a chimney company, sweep company.
Just to certify the flu in the draft.
It's all cleaned up, certify that. I mean, that's, that's what I would suggest if you're...
Would you wanna have a mandatory carbon monoxide detector?
Okay, that's in there.
I think, I think that's in there, it's in there. There's...
Yes, it is.
On ninety-seven six, page seven, uh, D one, I'm sorry, D two, I think it is. Maybe we should wanna get the email address for whoever the responsible party is also, not just the phone number and contact, uh, address.
Do you need primary contact or the owner?
Well, the, the owner, whoever, you know, we're not, we're not getting, the town's not giving the information on who's renting. It's only gonna be the owner who leases or rents it.
They may have a property management company that would pay a lot of money.
That's what I have.
You just, you just put down my extra post, you're fine.
No, I, I'm not gonna hit you with, with the spelling errors and that stuff.
Okay, yeah, I'll do it.
Yeah, I'm not touching that.
I mean, I'll sign. Uh, did anybody have any others tonight that they'd like to raise, uh, where you want to see what I produced for you in terms of the memo? Um, you can add to it, or if you have any that are typed and you, or you think is something overnight or whatever you wanna send me, please do.
I'm gonna send you an email, but just regarding signs, I sort of have a problem with allowing them to put up a sign, advertising it, it's, it's something a commercial business typically would do, not in a residential neighborhood.
Poor neighborhood.
Especially the size. I think anywhere else around, we, we allow average sugar to two square feet as opposed to six square feet.
How about, how about no square feet? It's not no square feet.
I've seen it, yeah.
It's not like somebody's driving down the road and say, hey, that's a great place to stop in and stay.
I'm gonna find it online.
It's online, they're, they're advertising it online, you know.
Do we wanna go through all these tonight, because I have some, but, or we'd rather do it next meeting?
No, so my suggestion was you can either go through them tonight, or you can type them up and send them to me, or then I can put together, uh, combined lists for everybody, sort of like hatched with the building type local law.
Just real fast, two things, obviously the numbering is all wrong.
Yeah, well, I, I talked to Mary about that and that she knows to tell them that it needs to be updated.
The definition of short-term rentals includes campgrounds, tent sites, tent platforms, and temporary structures, and then it just drops dead, there's no comment about any of those things later on in the code. I don't, one, I have problems with maybe those being included, but if we're gonna, if it's gonna be included, we should start talking about how far up the property line these things need to be located and how you're gonna provide restroom facilities for a tent. Okay, so I think there's an awful lot of open stuff that needs to be discussed. But otherwise I like the idea because I have a very big piece of property, I could probably fit fifty or a hundred of these things there.
A lot of tents.
I'd rather do is chase the cows out.
Throw a couple of bachelorette parties and we'll have a problem with the emails.
Have a couple of bachelor parties after we've got the sheep.
Oh, come on, Neil.
We're just gonna pretend that that's not...
It's on the record.
That was great.
Anything else from the board?
Okay.
No.
Sean, what could you do for our next meeting?
I can't top that, Mr....
I hope you can.
Uh, your next meeting, you got several public hearings. Uh, Ken Hill is adjourned public hearing, Dorezky, who you scheduled this evening, and Sixty-Nine Seller, who you adjourned, so three public hearings. Um, Nomar is coming back for a phase-in plan, and I have a question from Grace. Uniplank, which is a new application, uh, code enforcement issue, uh, they made a submission after the deadline today, so, uh, she didn't know if you wanted to have it on. She had indicated to them several times what the, what the deadline was and they just couldn't agree.
And who is it?
Uniplank, it's in the, um...
Furniture options?
Furniture options, that's it.
Oh.
It's in like a portion of the bonus.
Is this something before, so, right?
No, it has not been before you were ready. It's like a woodworking business, a light...
Uh, it's a light, light, uh, furniture-making woodworking type of assembly shop.
So you got those three public hearings in Nomar and Uniplank is up to you whether you want to, uh, move them to the fifth or to keep them on, or not keep them on, but allow them to get off the twenty-first.
Your call, Phil.
How does the board feel that we got three public hearings, none of these, uh, what, what did, we have Dorezky?
Yeah, that was the applicant from this evening, he's on for public hearing.
Who else?
Uh, Sixty-Nine Seller, who was on like that there was nobody here for, uh, to speak.
That's the S M seller.
That's correct, and Ken Hill, you've had that public hearing a couple times, just a way to get information from the...
That's for the flexible.
That's correct.
Sean, what's happening with Bachman? He didn't come to the last meeting, he missed this meeting. How often can he not show up?
I presume that the building inspector is gonna consider enforcement action against him.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Because he's, you know, having all the advantages and flinching on the, on the buffer, using the three-car garage, using the carriage house, and he's not even asking for forgiveness. He didn't ask permission, he's not asking for forgiveness, and I think he should get something.
Yeah, that's all, uh, all understood clearly, so we'll, we'll take care of it.
Sean, why is Ken coming back?
This is the date that we adjourned them to, but we just still haven't gotten anything from the DOT.
This, this depends on getting something from the DOT.
That was why I was continuing, because you had wanted to know about the planning, anything it was.
The intersection site didn't...
So first off, the DOT doesn't come in by prior to the nineteen deadline.
Uh, you can see if there's any public comments, I know Mr. Haley spoke at the last meeting, and then you'd like to adjourn to another date, that's what you want.
Keep, keep adjourning until we get something from the DOT.
You can also kick it out pretty far depending on when they think they'll get a response.
You wanna check on that, Sean?
Check to see what?
When they think they're gonna get a response.
Let me discuss it after I'm here.
Sure.
Anything else? If not, could I have a motion to close the meeting?
I would place a motion.
Diana, second by. Phil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?